Okay. Excuse me. All right, welcome again to the Age Friendly Seattle District One Candidate Forum. Thank you for being here. And thank you to the candidates for getting here, candidates and voters alike. Age Friendly Seattle is a citywide initiative, and we are tasked with the big job of making Seattle a great place to grow up and grow old, which is a tall order. But one way we can do that is by fostering dialogue between community members and elected leaders, creating spaces like these. We are unbiased. I'll remind everyone that we are not making an endorsement in this race, nor any of our co-sponsoring partners. So we're just here to learn today, and I really appreciate you being here with us. Of course, you don't have to remain unbiased. You may choose to vote for one candidate or the other by the end of today. So I first want to thank the West Seattle Senior Center for hosting us. Thank you, we love being in this space. And to Margie's Cafe for feeding us, we love Indian food. And to our co-sponsoring partners, the Mayor's Council on African-American Elders and the AAA, the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. Okay, so we're here because we know that King County is aging. By 2024, the number of people who are 85 years and older is expected to grow by 175%. Yeah, it's a big number. So it's really incumbent that our cities use all of the tools available to them to think about how can we create a community that's conducive to aging with grace and dignity and independently. Our population of older adults is also becoming increasingly diverse, and that's something we need to be thinking about. As people age, many, although not all, experience disabilities, and we know that many people will be living longer with more disabilities. So given these trends, it's especially important that we are here today. So how will today work? So I'll be moderating. When you RSVP'd, you submitted many excellent questions. Many of you had very similar questions. So I have done my best to consolidate those. If you don't hear your question repeated verbatim, hopefully you will hear it reflected in the questions that we're asking the candidates. You also have little slips of paper and pens. If you have a question at any point during this forum today, write it down, wave it around. Some of our lovely staff will come grab it from you and route it to me. I've already received one. So I will do my best to weave those into our candidates. We want to make sure that we're being as responsive to community questions as possible. So if people have, if you want to hear more on a certain topic, and that's the overwhelming sentiment in this room, we can allot more than 2.5 minutes that we're giving each candidate for their response. So I will be responsive to you, so just let me know. That said, I'll ask candidates to make an opening statement. They will...
No.
Oh, okay. So I'll ask candidates to make an opening statement. And then after that, I'll ask them each a question, and we'll rotate who answers first. Each candidate will have two and a half minutes to respond. These are big questions, that's not a lot of time. So we might have to ask another question, go deeper. And then at the end, we'll allow each candidate to make a closing remark as well. We're going to ignore that beep in until otherwise told. Lastly, I want to remind folks that we have democracy vouchers. How many of you have used or received a democracy voucher to your memory? Oh, good. Excellent. How many of you are not sure what a democracy voucher is? A couple people, that's fair. I also learned this year. So this is the city giving you $100 to be able to spend on a candidate of your choosing. You can even split your voucher and spend some on one candidate, some on another. This is an opportunity for folks to engage politically, even if you don't have the expendable resources to do so. And it's really working. The percentage of donors, who, political donors in Seattle, has gone way up since the project's inception. So if you lost your voucher, or you don't have it today, but you would like to use it today, feel free to see our friends at the City Ethics Department over there. They have replacement vouchers and can get you used right away. Okay, I think that's it for the instructions. So with that, I will start the official program. And Rob, since you're sitting closest to me, I will ask you to make your opening statement first. Megan, the back, is going to be your timer. So she'll give you an indication when you have 30 seconds left, as well as when the time goes up.
How long?
You have two and a half minutes.
Oh, wow, okay. Two and a half minutes is a lifetime, by the way. We've had some really brutal, like, 30-second debates, or forums. Well, first off, thank you so much, Age Friendly Seattle. Thank you to the West Seattle Senior Center for hosting and organizing and inviting me here today. My name is Rob Saka, running for Seattle City Council in District One, which includes West Seattle, where we live, Pioneer Square, Soto, South Park, and Georgetown. And a little bit about me. I'm a public school dad of three, Air Force veteran, attorney, community safety advocate. I live in Del Ridge with my family. My kids go to, for what it's worth, my kids go to Fairmont Park Elementary, so shout out to the Flying Falcons over here, anyone with kids or grandkids there. I am the only one in this race who actually has any experience writing government policy and helping to pass law. And I've done that by serving on countless government commissions to do things like review and update the King County Constitution, select the new Seattle Police Chief, redraw the King County Council districts, amongst other things. I'm grateful for that today personally and professionally, but through the help of effective government programs and services and the power of community, I was able to overcome the foster care system, public housing, free-produced lunch, housing instability, food insecurity, all of those things. So I know what it's like to struggle, like many of the people I'm hoping to help in this role. And I'm running to truly prioritize public safety in the city. There are some key differences, some similarities and key differences between me and my opponent. Public safety is one of those differences. Running to truly prioritize public safety, action on homelessness, and affordability. And I'm proud to earn the endorsement of our local Democratic Party. I received a really unfortunate mailer in the mail a few days ago, and it unfortunately came directly from my opponent that tried to paint me as Donald Trump, MAGA Republican. And today, the 34th Chair, Graham Murphy, actually slapped my opponent's wrist for her misinformation and false statements. I'm a strong Democrat, make no apologies about it. And proud to earn the endorsement of labor organizations, many small business owners, and Mayor Bruce Harrell. So I'm looking forward to partnering closely with the mayor if elected. And I'll never forget, I am running and here to serve you all, people. And I would love to earn your vote. Thank you.
Okay, Aaron?
It's Marin. And you and everybody on the planet, so don't worry. I'm used to it. Hello, my name is Marin Costa. Thank you for having us here today, it's a pleasure and a great turnout. I've lived in District One for 21 years and Seattle for 33 years. I'm a mom of kids, I have kids in public schools, two of my own, two step, one adopted from the foster care system with special needs. So it gives me two 15-year-olds and two 17-year-olds, by the way, so keeps me busy. And then when I first moved out here after college, I was a waitress, bartender. I started a nonprofit to lift up women and girls because we know that when we invest in women and girls, it benefits all of us. But then Seattle became a tech town, and I became a tech worker. I started working at Amazon very early on. I continued doing what I felt like was making a difference, making Amazon more inclusive for everyone, whether it's your internet speed, or your culture, or your gender. Amazon was very not inclusive. Also making it more accessible for colorblind, you know, poor eyesight, all of these things. I also managed big teams and big budgets, solved big problems, got a bunch of patents, and, you know, rose to the top of my field, which was user experience design, which I like to call the soul of big tech, because it makes big tech do things for people, not just profit. But then I got to a point where I decided I really want to serve my community and give back and start where I am and try to make change from where I am, which is what I always advise people to do. Seattle needs, we have big problems to solve, and Seattle voters shouldn't have to accept more of the same. I'm running because we have failed to make progress on key issues like homelessness, public safety, and affordable housing, as well as climate change. And then I'm going to take the rest of this time here to just address the misinformation that is going to keep coming and has been coming from my opponent's campaign. I apologize for that. I would not choose to run a negative campaign this way. Not sure who's making that choice, but he will try to tell you I want to defund the police. That is just a lie. He will try to tell you that I voted against the drug bill. That is also not true. And I did not compare him to Trump. I simply stated an unsayable fact that he's getting money in his campaign from the top two Trump donors in our town. Thank you.
Okay, well... I will give you a second to respond, but let me first turn to some of the questions and the issues that were brought up. So Marin, you have the mic, so I'm going to let you start this question, and then Rob will give you a chance to respond. You mentioned the drug bill. So not surprisingly, the overwhelming issue that people wanted to hear about today was public safety followed by housing. So I have a few questions on that. I'm going to ask you about the recent drug legislation that was passed. I'm going to ask you about policing. And I'm going to ask you more generally about safe streets. So three different questions. So let's start with drugs. So are you in favor of the recent drug law adopted by City Council that criminalizes public drug use? Additionally, where will the funding come from to operationalize the diversion policies included in this legislation? And how will funds be spent regarding the opioid dilemma?
Great question. Overarchingly, I am the public safety candidate in this race. I have all of the public safety endorsements, from our 911 dispatch operators to the correction officers. I have the endorsement from the ATU, the Amalgamated Transit Union, who drive the King County buses. And our safety is a paramount issue to them and their drivers, as well as to all riders. And they trust my public safety platform to keep them safe and to keep all of us safe on public transit. The drug bill...
Sorry.
My stance on the drug bill has been that I found it performative and exactly the type of stuff that we don't want to keep doing as a city council. It is grandstanding and ideological and performative and will make people think that we got something done for public safety when nothing actually will get done. Because if you're someone who wants to incarcerate for substance use disorder, that's not going to happen because we don't have the officer bandwidth and shouldn't use the officer bandwidth to pick people up for that. The courts are backed up and the jails are full. If you're someone who wants to provide diversion treatment for substance use disorder, which is the evidence-based path, which is more effective and less expensive, but if you want to do that, that's also not going to happen because we haven't funded the diversion programs. So to go down to City Council and protest and shout and create a petition to get signatures from Lisa Herbold, which was her bill in the first place, these are things that just cause noise and distraction and prevent us from simply getting the problem solved. Getting down to basics, looking at the problem, and getting to work. And that's what we need City Council to do. And that is not what this bill did. If I was on council, I would have been pushing very hard to make sure that the bill had teeth, that we have a system where we can do the evidence-based proven path, which is diversion. And if diversion, and if and when diversion doesn't work, then we can incarcerate. We have to get the carrot and stick right. But putting people incarcerated off the bat for substance use disorder only, no crime, substance use disorder, is a waste of taxpayers' money.
Rob, your second question too.
I heard a lot of words there in those last two and a half minutes to ultimately say, "No, she does not support that drug use bill." I did. I also supported the original drug use bill that was before the Seattle City Council in June. She's on record then saying she would oppose that too. And we need to do, we need to do better. We need to do better. Not only do I support that drug use bill, that despite some of the harsh performative rhetoric that we've heard, including just right now, harsh war on drugs, this and that, all I want to do is create an option. Doesn't require, but creates an option to prosecute people for open public drug use on the streets. As a dad of three young kids, I shouldn't have to be doing gymnastics and obstacle courses over people in paraphernalia when I go to the Alaska Junction to visit small businesses with my family or to our local parks. Similarly, people who are suffering from debilitating drug dependency issues, they should come to expect better from their city. And we're going to encourage people to seek the treatment that they so desperately need. So yes, I support it. And I also led and organized a signature gathering effort, collected hundreds of signatures of like-minded residents across this district, and took the extra step of going to Seattle City Hall during the final crucial vote and testifying in favor of it. Yes, I support it. We need to do better. And while my opponent opposes it with no concrete plan to prevent the fentanyl overdose deaths that we're experiencing with no concrete plan to get people onto treatment, I support it. I'm tired of hearing about when people oppose. What are you for? I'm for it. We can and must do better for people. You all deserve better. And I think this bill is an important first step. And I'm the only candidate, by the way, that released press releases on all the most important topics related to public safety, the drug use bill. Poor woman Candula, who was killed on accident by Seattle officers in those press remarks, I released statements contemporaneous in time with those events because I'm paying attention to the public safety situation, folks. I support common sense-based approaches, and I think this bill does exactly that. Republicans and Democrats already got together and agreed, did the work. Seattle should adopt state law. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask another question about this bill. So it's a follow-up, so there are ten people, maybe let's do one minute for this. So in the law that was just passed, there's a provision that encourages police officers to divert people with substance use disorders into treatment, rather than make arrests, only make arrests when a person poses a threat of harm to someone else. The question is, and Rob will start with you, how can we be confident that officers will make unbiased judgments?
Well, it starts with effective training. And under Mayor Harrell's guidance that he released to Chief Diaz, there was a certain standard that kind of double fixed on the statutory standard. But effectively, people aren't going to, again, despite some of the harsh rhetoric, people aren't going to be swept away to jails and thrown and locked with, thrown under the jail. No. But we need to set clear standards. And I think the mayor's executive order does exactly that. I'm here to, unlike my opponent who's talking about defund the police, I'm here to hire more police. I'm here to empower them to effectively carry out the public safety mandate, set and enforce the highest standards of excellence and professionalism in the communities where they operate, and swiftly hold them accountable, just like you would anyone if you don't do your job. So they need transparency. The public expects transparency on what enforcement looks like, and those frontline officers deserve transparency and proper training on how to properly enforce that statute.
All right.
Implicit bias is something that I studied quite a bit as a user experience designer and user researcher. You can't just train somebody out of implicit bias. It's incredibly difficult. And that is one of the problems with this bill, is that we are leaving the decision of whether or not to incarcerate somebody up to a police officer who isn't necessarily trained, and it's very hard to train people, in implicit bias. And so we need to make sure, the better response is actually to set up the care team, the mayor's care team that he has proposed to set up. We need to fund that. And when we get to funding, that will be another big differentiator between my opponent and me. He will want to, he will not commit to raising taxes on billionaires and big businesses, so they will land on all of us. So, I have so many things in your statement too, so, okay, I'll just stop.
Okay, we're going to keep on with police questions. So do you think that there is a lack of police presence in neighborhoods in Seattle? How might the cities benefit from increased police funding and presence? And then specifically, what are your thoughts around how to support the chief of police in efforts to negotiate officer discipline efforts with the police guild and union? So Marin, I'll kick it off.
Yeah, hold your points, okay.
Do you, I can repeat it if you help, sure.
Take a quick note.
So broadly, do you believe that there is a lack of police presence? How might the city and neighborhoods benefit from increased police funding and presence? And then specifically, any thoughts you have around how to support the chief in efforts to negotiate officer discipline efforts with the union?
Okay, great questions. I do think there is a lack of police in general and police presence. We have to bring down our response times. We need to have more visibility of police. One of the, there's two important ways that we can do this. If we actually fund the mayor's care team, which right now it's a pilot and it has $7 million, and that is a drop in the bucket of what will make it a successful department. But so many cities have proven that this is a very successful thing to do. But if we fund that team where we have alternative response, we can, you know, Amy Smith, who I've worked with at the 911 Dispatchers Guild, who have endorsed me, they have done a deep dive to find out that they can move a significant number of the calls to the care team. We just increased our armed officer support so that they can be where they need to be for violent crimes. I have lots of ways to think about increasing hiring and recruiting, but I really want to take the time to make sure I mention that I think another opportunity that we're missing as a city is to hire more community service officers. So we have 20 throughout the city. They are in uniform, they are in the police department, but they carry non-lethal weapons. I would love to double that force and have people on the street, on the beat. I would love to hire people out of the communities that they grew up in. So they already have formed the trust and the relationships. They know people, they know the businesses, they know the business owners, and they walk the street, they are visible, and they can, you know, they would have a non-lethal weapon as needed, but they're going to be less of a threat. Not everyone feels safe when the blackened window SUV rolls through and you know that there's people in there carrying AR-15s. So if we have this role, then I think we could actually encourage the younger generations to sign up for, because we know that there's, we're going to need Gen Y and Gen Z to step up into public safety roles, but currently, they're not signing up for the armed services. They're not signing up for police, you know, armed police positions. Not everyone wants to be a Navy SEAL. You know, we need to have more layers of public safety in order to bring more people in to help us do the big job that we have to do as a city.
Thanks, Rob.
Is there a lack of police presence? Yes. How did we get here? Well, we shot ourselves in the foot. Yes, admit a national officer shortage, yes, yeah. I'm running to fix Seattle's problems. And yes, we did shoot ourselves in the foot. And unlike my opponent, who said recently during a candidate debate that the 2020 vote by the Seattle City Council to defund the police by 50% was not a mistake, I think it was a huge mistake. And sadly, I think we're living through some of the consequences of that today from a public safety situation. Because what did that do? Well, that vote, we lost the first black female police chief we've ever had in the city. And I served on the committee to select her successor. On her heels, record numbers of rank-and-file officers resigned, left the force, lateral elsewhere. Why? They didn't feel supported, nor should they. So I'm here to hire more police. And with hiring more police, allow police to be more proactive, today we're on a constant response posture. Wherever the latest crisis or emergency is throughout the city, that's where the police are at. And they will be proactive. I think, so I'm going to hire more police to allow police to be more proactive. I want to restore good old-fashioned, community-oriented policing, bike patrols, foot patrols, regular emphasis patrols in places like Elkhai, when we know there's, you know, potential challenges in the summertime. Not only, you know, once a month or whenever they can kind of reconfigure some resources around. We need to do that. I heard a lot of talk just now about care teams and CSOs. Yes, 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 yes. I think the original call to the question was lack of police. Yes, and, yes, we need care team. Amy Smith reports to the mayor, who has endorsed my campaign, by the way. 911 calls her, frontline operators are different. So yes, we need care team, yes, we need CSO. But we also need, make no mistake, we need policing and enforcement. Policing and enforcement is important. I'm here to champion a more thoughtful, balanced approach to public safety that does recognize the importance of policing and enforcement. Police reform and officer accountability, yes, that matters too, we need to do that. And, by the way, alternatives, whether it's CSOs or the new care team, all of that matters. We can't just kick the pillar out of that three-legged stool and a policing enforcement and expect that to slap each other in high fives and, you know, expect that to solve all for public safety challenges. All are really important.
Okay, I have one more question on public safety, and then we're going to move on to housing. So folks, if you feel like your questions around public safety have not been addressed, drop them down, send them my way. So this final question is, you know, in the forums we've held around Seattle, this district included, people are expressing frustration at the lack of safe streets, whether that's drug use, we talked about policing, but also just a general rudeness, in the words of one constituent here, towards elders in particular. I've also heard complaints of scooters and e-bikes on sidewalks that make people feel unsafe. So the question is, in general, what will you do to promote safety around Seattle streets? So Rob will start with you.
I'm here to promote safety by resetting the direction of the Seattle City Council and change terms with me. And I hope to earn the support of you all as part of that effort. Because again, I'm here to provide a more thoughtful, balanced approach to public safety. Policing and enforcement, police reform, and alternatives or civilian-led responses. All three are really important. You know, hire more police, yes. Going to empower them to effectively carry out the public safety mandate, yes. Sitting in force, again, the highest standards of excellence, yes. And swiftly hold people accountable if they don't do their job right. And, yes, and, we're going to invest in that care team. I met with Amy Smith as well. Looking forward to partnering closely with Amy and her team. I met with all six of her workers at the time. All social workers. We need to grow and scale that response. And invest in reform. As a black man growing up in this country, I've experienced what bad policing looks like firsthand, which is how I know personally that we need better police, not no police, better police. Again, policing and enforcement is important. I was also, one block away, me and my wife were one block away from the finish line of the 2013 Boston Marathon. And when both of those bombs went off, I'll never forget seeing not dozens, but hundreds of emergency responders, including police, putting their safety and health on the line to protect us, which is how I know we need a good, adequate, adequate police staff, police force, and all first responders. There's certain things government can do, and I talked about a few of them. And then there's certain things that community is best empowered to do. Some of this rudeness and, you know, that people are experiencing on the streets, including seniors, I heard the call, the question. I don't know if there's a law or Seattle code that I can write, if elected, to eliminate that. But I set the standard for, I hope to set the standard for excellence and appropriate decorum and conduct and how we should be treating each other. And I live that every day.
All right.
I'll take a quick minute to respond to the defund misinformation that comes. As candidates, early on, we did a forum where we were...
Um, as candidates, early on, we, uh, did a forum where we were doing a flash round. And now that we're all skilled as candidates, having been new to this job, we all know, don't answer in the flash round unless you know exactly what your, you know, what your, it's a blank, black and white, yes or no. The question was, was it right at the time in 2020 for the council to vote to defund? I said yes, because, and, but there's so much context. And so this is the one thing, the one thing that my opponent continually takes out of context. That's so unfortunate to mislead you all about my public safety platform, which is comprehensive, much more comprehensive and in-depth than my opponent's. Please go to my website to check it out. But I said yes, because at the time, more than 50% of Seattle and the nation was standing up to say, we want change, we want a third department, we want non, we want civilian responders, we want a whole bunch of things, we want to reimagine policing. And that's what I was saying yes to, and that's what we're finally getting to now. That will make us all safer. Now, in hindsight, was it a success? Absolutely not. It was not a success, because nobody was prepared. Nobody had a plan. I, if I had been on the council, I would have hoped that I had a plan before I made a vote like that. It's ludicrous to think that we could ever get rid of armed officers in our country where we have the highest, by a vast margin, number of guns on our streets. There is no way I would ever agree to have. It's completely ludicrous. So, please do trust that. Now, quickly on the rudeness in the streets, I hear this a lot, a lot of people on the doors. And I think there is frustration, I think we're in the shadow of COVID. I think we need to do more with, um, you know, speed humps and speed limits. And, um, curb cuts are really important. I've seen a lot of good curb cuts going in, that's an important thing to add to our streets. Um, bike lanes, making sure bike lanes are safe. Um, we can, the city already has a list of the top 20 most dangerous, uh, things on our streets, most dangerous intersections, most dangerous places on our streets. I would want to take that list, prioritize them, and start knocking them off one by one.
Sure, so May, can you add like 20 seconds for Rob to respond?
Yeah, I mean, I just heard that my opponent said she held up that card and said the defund vote was a good idea. Um, and now, like, backtracking, apparently, maybe it wasn't a good, the best idea? I don't know, I'm confused. She was for it before she was against it. And then she talks about, then I, then I hear conversations about how, you know, like, oh, I actually have a plan. I actually have personally the most detailed, comprehensive plans available on my website. Um, I guess the differentiator, you know, is that my plan is actually paired with experience doing exactly this. Um, so, rather than be concerned about the minutia of my specific policy proposals, uh, I, I don't know how, I'm confused about how my opponent isn't even consistent about the really important principal issues of public safety that matter most to voters.
So I'm getting, uh, more questions about police and funding, so I'm gonna stick with this topic for a moment, and I think instead of two and a half minutes, we'll just shorten responses to one minute. Um, so, first question is, and you both may have different answers to this, so I'll pose it. I don't know that there's an unbiased answer here, so you both have a chance to answer. Can you define defunding police, what you mean by that? And how would you fund more police? Um, so, Rob, I'll let you go first.
Defining defund the police, well, I think if you ask 10 different activists what the heck defund the police means, you'll probably get 10 different answers. I don't know, it's a, it's a movement that I personally don't support, never thought was a good idea. And I think sadly, again, we're living through some of the consequences of that right now. So, I, I do support, I do support alternatives, investing in alternatives like si, community service op, or officers, our care team, but I also recognize the role for police. They play a very important role in our public safety, like broader challenge. So, it's not, again, the essence of my campaign is, you know, it's not one or the other. Multiple, complex things can, and in this case, must be true at the same time. I don't know what defund is, but, you know, I think we need better. And the last thing we need is another activist with a megaphone talking about things that no one wants.
Maran, same questions to you.
So first of all, defund didn't happen, I think we all know that. Um, and the proposal at the time, they agreed to defund by 50%. A lot of people say the big mistake was to say 50% to set a goal that they had no plan to meet. I think the discussion was important. I think some of the consequences we're seeing now, that younger generations don't want to sign up for this job in general, and armed services in general, is that we've had one tool in our toolbox this whole time, in armed officers, and they aren't actually the best tool to send to a mental health crisis or to a person down. Um, and so, we now are behind. There are several cities way out in front of us that have set up a more nuanced, comprehensive plan for public safety, and we've been stuck on worrying about defund and trying to hire more cops, when we could have been moving forward with things that will actually keep us safe. And for funding, if we don't, if we're not willing to tax business and billionaires, we're never gonna have enough money to fund the big problems that our city has. And I want to make sure that it doesn't land on all of us, especially those of us trying to age in place.
Okay, I'm gonna shift gears, speaking of aging in place, and ask a few housing questions. I'd also want to acknowledge, I've received a few questions that are directed at one candidate or the other, and I am prohibited from asking those due to city ethics rules. So, I want to invite you to approach the candidates directly at the end of the program, and you can ask them those questions yourself. So, I'm not ignoring you, I'm just following the rules. Okay, so housing, we know that most people want to age in place. We want to stay in the homes of the communities that we love. Um, however, that is getting increasingly hard in a city with rising costs, uh, especially for many older adults who are living on fixed incomes. So I'm gonna ask a couple of questions about renters as well as homeowners. So, here in King County, 60% of people over 60 are rent burdened. Um, and I will say, there was a recent Seattle Times article published around age-friendly neighborhoods. When I looked at the comments that people were leaving, overwhelmingly, people were expressing fears of displacement. So, first renters, as you know, Washington State prohibits rent control, and rents have increased significantly here in Seattle in recent years. What will you do to prevent older adult renters from being displaced from longtime rentals in communities? And, uh, Mayor, we'll start with you.
Maran.
Maran, I'm so sorry.
It's so easy, that's, that's why I asked you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, this is a real concern, it's a concern for everyone, but especially people who are on a fixed income. Um, there are several subsidies, as I'm sure you know, that come from the state and the county to keep, to give people, um, you know, rebates or deferments on property taxes, which are so high, because, you know, we keep dumping everything onto the property tax instead of taxing big business and billionaires. Um, and that is a big problem. Um, for renters in particular, I do support rent stabilization. I know rent control is, uh, you know, not legal, my opponent does not support rent stabilization. That can go a long ways into making sure that people stay housed and stay in place. Um, you have limits on when you, you know, how high you can raise a rent and how much warning you can give, uh, how much warning you have to give people before you can do that. We can also give people the right of first res, um, right to first, um, residence, so I'm using the wrong word here, but, um, when we upgrade a building, we can make sure that people that were living there get the right of first refusal to, to, um, stay living in their building that has now been, um, uh, improved. We also need to just increase housing in general, we need emergency housing, we need, uh, you know, stable, um, permanent, supportive housing. We need affordable housing via the new, um, uh, social housing, um, bill that was passed. Um, we need to rezone so that we can increase density. We need to remove the constrictions of the design process to make housing move faster. Any and all types of housing, even the billion-dollar condos that we add, will help bring rent down overall. Another, uh, supporter that has dumped tens of thousands of dollars into, um, my opponent's campaign is the Master Builders. Their motivation is actually to keep rents high. And so, they are working against the work that we're all trying to do to bring rent down and, um, make housing, housing affordable. I wouldn't, I would repudiate that money, and they wouldn't give it to me in the first place because they know that I wouldn't, uh, agree to their platform.
Rob?
So, people are rent burdened, and I know this firsthand because I've been rent burdened myself. Recall, you know, I over, for the first nine years of my life, I overcame the foster care system. Before, my dad, who was a Nigerian immigrant, was able to rescue me from those circumstances. And we lived in public housing, low-income housing, all over. So I know what it's like, again, personally. Not because I read it somewhere, or not because a friend who I, I know and respect told me. I know what it's like personally. And, but when we add on all these new property taxes, there's another levy before, before voters this election cycle, there was one before it, and one before it, and no, no doubt there'll be one after it. People on fixed incomes, seniors are the ones getting squeezed the most. And I believe seniors deserve to be able to age in place. That's why I support moratoriums or deferments or exclusions from new levies on seniors, on fixed income. You, you all shouldn't bear the burden of whatever new fancy thing that we need to do. You deserve to age in place, and I'm here to help with that. I, I couldn't agree more with what my opponent just said about the need to build and grow. We do need to build and grow. It's in part a supply and demand problem. We need to build and grow as quickly as possible and fund the investment of our growth from a city investment standpoint, focusing our efforts on a low, on low-income units and middle-income units as well. Remove a lot of the red tape from the burgeoning process, which in Seattle is notoriously complex. So, that, by the way, is not only good for developers, but good for residents, who maybe want to build an ADU in the back of their homes. I also support anti-displacement strategies and funding of anti-displacement strategies, like rights of first refusal. So if you get squeezed out because of some new development, you have the right to return, or not to, if you so choose. Relocation assistance for people impacted, community land trusts, really important. Public-private partnerships, we've seen a great example of that recently with the, uh, the Admiral Church. But you all deserve to age in place.
Um, let me ask just a, a follow-up question, because you both mentioned this kind of supply and demand issue and the need to create more housing. Um, how will you, where are the resources gonna come from that, specifically for affordable housing? I'll just give you a minute to respond each. Uh, Rob, since Rob is mine.
Sure, yeah, so where are the resources gonna come from? So my starting point is making sure that whatever tax dollars we're investing and we're using today are invested wisely. So I'm calling for a third-party independent audit of all city budget and spending to make sure that taxpayers, you all, are getting the most bang for your buck. And we also need to consolidate programs and services to make sure they're tied to priorities of this Seattle City Council today and this mayoral administration today, and not legacy ones of 10, 15, 20-plus years ago. So once we do that, then let's talk about raising revenue. But there was a new progressive revenue report that was recently released, and it sounds like me and my opponent agree on the need for a few of those things, including the vacancy lot tax, incentive, better incentivizing property owners for unused property. Also, maintaining and preserving jumpstart tax, the CEO head tax, or the CEO tax on high-income earners. There are a number of options. But a tax, for the sake of a tax without a parallel plan to make sure that your existing funds are, are being wisely invested, is no plan at all. That's business as usual, and it's irresponsible.
Maran?
I agree with that. Um, I come out of Amazon, one of the main leadership principles was frugality that was drilled into us. You have to make sure that you know where every dollar is going, and you have to optimize every dollar, because those are the dollars that are spent on customers or voters. You know, this is, this is the first thing we need to do, is make sure that we are running a tight ship. I would love the mayor to ask all of his directs, to ask their directs, to ask their directs, to filter out ways that their department can save money, because the people on the ground level know where the leaky bucket is happening. We can also do a third-party audit, that'll be expensive. We have, um, several taxes. Yes, there is a vacancy tax, that's only gonna bring in a few 30 to 60 million. We have, um, the jumpstart tax, which my opponent won't commit to raising, he will commit to maintaining. I would agree to raise as necessary if we find out we need to fund these programs. I suspect we will. I also support the CEO tax. I also support an extreme wealth tax, which we saw, um, put in place at the state level, 7% for extreme wealth. We could add a couple more percent at, um, the city level, and that could bring in some important revenue to help us fund these very important programs. That's something my opponent won't mention.
Thank you. Okay, I have a, a very specific question about renters, so I'm gonna do another minute for this one too. Um, I can't verify this, a constituent wrote it, so, but I will pass it along. Um, in 2021, there were 3,285 renters' complaints filed with the City Department of Construction and Inspections. Only five fines were issued, demonstrating a clear need for more robust enforcement mechanism. Seattle has supported workers' rights by creating the Office of Labor Standards. If elected, will you commit to protecting Seattle's more than 400,000 renters by creating an Office of Rental Housing Standards? Maran, I'll, I'll start with you.
That sounds like one possible solution that I would support. Um, we definitely need to protect against predatory landlords. Um, there may be more than, there may be more than one way to do that. Um, not just even for, uh, residents, but for small businesses. Um, we, we have to make sure that people are not pushed out without enough warning and with, without a reasonable amount of time. And we need to make sure that landlords are responsive to complaints, especially the very large landlords who are running big businesses, a lot of times, they're not, they're, they're foreign, foreign landlords investing in big, big buildings in our city and neglecting maintenance on the buildings that people are living in. And we need, we cannot stand for that. We need to make sure that buildings are kept up to code, renters are protected, and then we need to make sure that small landlords are also protected, um, as well. But renters are number one.
Rob?
Yes, uh, I, I, I think that investing in, standing up that Office of Rental Standards, um, you know, I would strongly, I think we should, that's something worth exploring. And we need to figure out what, like, what is the goal, the overarching goal that we're trying to accomplish? Protect renters who are being squeezed out. And we need to put some good, you know, enforcement guidelines in place to make sure that we root out, uh, you know, slum lords. I don't think anyone wants slum lords. Make sure that people renting properties are renting them with basic standards of habitability. Yeah, those, those are, those are great goals, let's do that. Rent control? No, I don't support rent control, because it's explicitly preempted under state law. And so all the, all the wasted cycles that you hear and see on TV and all the news coverage and council members, so want, talk about rent control, rent control. It's a waste of time, because under state law, you can't, localities, including Seattle, can't even enact rent control.
Um, so moving on to homeowners, um, and Rob will start with you this time. Would you support, and you've referenced this before, but feel free to expand. Would you support stabilizing housing taxes to keep seniors living on fixed incomes in their homes?
Yes, I have answered this before, and, uh, I, again, my, my principle is, starting with principles, principles matter. My principles and value statements are that seniors deserve to age in place. And I think all policy needs to flow from whatever that principle is. And yes, I support moratoriums and exclusions, and for people being squeezed out the most, people on fixed incomes. Yeah, I've already answered it. Yeah, I've already answered it.
Fair enough. Lauren, I'll give you a chance to answer.
Yeah, this is something I hear on the doors, knocking on people's doors a lot. We start to feel like we're paying rent to live in our own houses that we might even fully own, but the property taxes are so high that it's like paying rent on your own house. And I have heard from so many people that they are really needing to consider moving out. And this is, I mean, this is a big problem with Seattle in general, we know, like nurses and teachers and firefighters can't afford to live here either. But yes, I think we need to protect, I would support stabilizing, it's like basically rent stabilization for people trying to age in place. And it's like stabilizing your property tax, which is basically like the rent you're paying to live in your own house. So rent stabilization, yes, again, something that my opponent doesn't support.
Okay, just to let the audience know, we have a few more questions. One on homelessness, climate, health, and transportation, and pharmaceutical accountability. So if you have other questions that you don't think are going to be addressed in that mix, feel free to jot them down and send them my way. So homelessness, you may or may not know that older adults are the fastest growing demographic of people experiencing homelessness. So it's very timely and appropriate to ask you about this today. With the city council having to look at a reduced budget in 2024, are you in favor of all homelessness programs being required to provide an annual audit to show where all taxpayers' monies are being used? And I might add, given a potential budget shortfall, where would you be most likely to cut programming? Lauren, I'll start with you.
That's true that we are heading into, in 2025, we'll have a $230 million budget deficit. And this is mostly in an attempt to pay a city worker's a living wage. Anyone who runs a business knows that your largest item is usually your employees. And we definitely do need to pay the people who make our city work and run and provide these incredibly valuable services to our city. We need to make sure that they're paid a living wage or they won't be able to live in the city that they're serving. And I've spoken with many of them, and it's pretty heartbreaking, actually. The mayor was proposing a 1% wage increase, which is a huge tax cut, knowing how fast wages are, are priced, cost of living is going up. So we definitely need to, sorry, we should definitely be doing an audit to make sure there's, there's many industries, like homelessness and even healthcare, where we see that the incentives aren't set up correctly. Healthcare is often incentivized to keep people sick because that's how they make money. Homelessness can be incentiv, homeless, you know, when you hear this critique of the homelessness industrial complex, homelessness industrial complex, you're incentivized to keep people homeless because that's how you keep your nonprofit or your business or whatever you're doing in business. So we need to make sure that's not happening. We need to make sure that we have transparency of where these dollars are going, and we need to make sure, I think the part, the part of the role of the King County Regional Housing Authority that was just started was to make sure that we're sharing this task regionally and that we can have a more centralized, efficient, streamlined process for how we distribute resources and how we fund this. Again, though, the jumpstart tax is what has been earmarked to help us out with affordable housing and homelessness. Property taxes, and the jumpstart tax comes from the big businesses, property taxes comes from you. If we can increase the jumpstart tax, we can make sure that less of the burden falls on all of us. But if we're not willing to increase that, we're, we're going to end up with a budget, we will end up with shortfalls. I do think we will need to look at all sources of both frugality saving money and austerity as well as raising progressive revenue. And I just want to make sure that the revenue that we raise is progressive, not regressive. And it's, like I said, I think we're all starting to feel like it's a little regressive.
Yes, I support an audit on our homelessness spending, homelessness spending, starting with homelessness spending. That is probably the biggest opportunity that I see, and I think just having knocked personally on thousands and thousands of doors. And I, at the start of this conversation, I've spoken to many of you who have personally knocked on the door. And one theme that, that seems to be emerging is people don't mind paying their fair share. People don't mind paying their fair share, whatever that is, people don't mind. But what people do have a clear problem with is no one's seeing any accountability for results. So I'm here to prioritize outcomes and results over blank checks. So yes, I support that audit for homelessness spending in particular. I think we need to identify whatever the systems or deficiencies are, make improvements and adjustments. I want to bake in performance targets and goals specifically into our, you know, all of our contracts with our homelessness service providers, making sure we're making data-informed decisions, and we see outcomes and we can better track and monitor our progress. The spending aspect, you know, we, we, so before we come back to the, to the trough to ask for more, you know, again, I think doing those things, we can better make sure we're, we're seeing results. Because homelessness is, is one issue in particular that, yeah, sure, you know, like Seattle is, you know, homelessness, we can all see in Seattle, it's a challenge, but it's not a Seattle-only problem. It's a region problem. It's a state problem. It's a federal problem. And so we need to look to those other sources as well for funding. We can't solely bear the burden, the city of Seattle government cannot solely bear the burden of funding the homelessness challenge in the city. 70% of the King County Regional Homelessness budget is, it comes directly from the city of Seattle funding. Over time, I'd like to see that sheer decline and other municipalities pick up. And then looking to other sources that I mentioned to help share the burden and to share the opportunity. And also, there's a lot of organizations that are interested in helping. So that's why we need to strongly explore other public-private partnerships. And that's why I'm not here to take any, I will preserve that jumpstart tax, not here to take any organization or individual for granted, here to work with everyone because I need to represent every individual person.
I'm going to ask a specific question about transportation. So again, I think we'll do one minute for this. Someone is pointing out that West Seattle buses carry a ton of people. They're estimating that they carry as many passengers as Sound Transit says that light rail will carry in 20 years. Given, given that fact, again, I haven't personally verified that, but do you think that we should pause and rethink the light rail proposed for West Seattle? Rob will start with you.
No, I don't think we should pause and rethink light rail coming through West Seattle. It's, a lot of work has been invested in this whole effort already, and we need to continue down that path. I, I'm excited for light rail. That doesn't mean, at the same time, we can't, we must also won't implement anti-displacement strategies. A lot of local small businesses and residences are impacted. So we need to do right and make those people that are impacted whole. But I, I support Sound Transit and the high-level plan to bring Sound Transit to West Seattle is another option. Buses are full, routes are getting cut, but transit is important. Transit options, transit options are important, preserving transit options and expanding options. So we need to incentivize people to take transit, but I'm less in favor of this is your option, no parking.
Lauren?
I'm a huge fan of public transit in general, and would love to see it be free. Don't know if that'll ever happen in our city, but we need to move out of individual cars as fast as we can. It's our absolute largest source of carbon, individual cars and trucks. I have kids, I want them to see a future. We already seen the effects of climate change. It will come for the most vulnerable among us, worst and first, and we are way behind on our climate goals. So I am a huge fan of public transit. I'm a huge fan of accessible, convenient, safe public transit. And I want to make sure, I'm a big fan of buses because they run on existing infrastructure. We can set them up, they're flexible, they could hit, we could instantly hit the transit deserts that we have in North Admiral. We could fix lines going north, south, east, west. I would love to see the bus lane be built and continued on the Cloverleaf on 99 so that you have unbroken bus lane. We, we need to look at the options. The West Seattle link is, I, I would love to see light rail. It's very expensive, and I'm not sure we're going to get the bang for the buck out of what is proposed right now, but I do think that ship has probably sailed.
Okay, I'm going to continue with climate, and we have about, I'm going to say eight-ish minutes before we let people go and mingle with the candidates directly. So maybe we could just do like a minute and a half for questions so we can get the rest. All right. So speaking of climate, climate change is impacting older adults disproportionately. Older adults are more susceptible to the extreme heat and extreme cold that we've been experiencing in Seattle lately. So people want to know, what would you do to address climate change? And specifically, are all of our public institutions already divested from fossil fuel? And if not, how can we move away from that and invest in clean energy? So Lauren, I'll start with you.
Great question. Heat kills more than any other weather event. We actually, heat is the most dangerous, it's more dangerous than earthquakes, it's more dangerous than, you know, hurricanes. We need to increase rebates for heat pump air conditioning. We need to build climate resiliency centers in every neighborhood and turn all of our schools, public libraries, churches, and community centers into climate resiliency centers so you can bring your body temperature down for at least a portion of the day. That saves a lot of lives. We, the digestive.
Yeah, have we have all our public institutions divested?
So, no. I would love to see that happen. I actually, my last role was at Microsoft, and I was pushing Microsoft to provide a carbon-neutral, ethical and sustainable option for 401Ks. Because at any given time, Microsoft has upwards of $40 billion in employee retirement, and if a big gorilla like Microsoft got in and pushed the vanguards and the fadellages and the BlackRock to create these products that, that would allow us to be sustainable and ethical, that could change the game. The city or the university system of California has done a good job creating carbon and ethically, ethical and sustainable options for investments, and we need to do a better job as a city, for sure.
Thank you. Rob?
So this new district one includes communities directly in the Duomois Valley, Georgetown and South Park. I was door-knocking there recently, and, you know, I heard a lot of concern from residents directly at their doors about the climate impact. People want justice for, you know, one of the, for, for those communities. I live in a, you know, not so friendly community myself in terms of climate impact, Del Ridge. But rather than compare stars, you know, I'm here to help. And what I plan to do is we need to get as many people out of single occupied city vehicles as possible and away from fossil burning, fossil fuel burning vehicles as possible. So that's why I want to build out and expand the EV charging infrastructure throughout the city. West Seattle, I'm told, is one of the highest rates of ownership of EVs in the city. So we need to build and expand our, you know, EV charging infrastructure. You know, I, I agree on the need to have climate resiliency hubs. You know, we also need to expand our transit options, in options. But a lot of people today aren't taking transit because they don't feel safe. So we can expand and, you know, all the options we want and, and transit and mass transit, which we, which I will do, but if we're not, at the same time, making sure people feel safe to get on the bus and simultaneously driving adoption, we fail. So, and also plan to invest in tree canopy as we build. We need to have trees.
So we've talked a bit about drug use, so I'm going to go back there and specifically ask you about pharmaceutical accountability. I think probably all of us in this room have lost somebody or been touched by addiction. The opioid crisis, and if we haven't, we are lucky. Kinship care is on the rise, grandparents raising grandchildren, and that is linked to the rise in opioid use. So how can the city use the civil justice system to hold pharmaceutical industries accountable? And Rob will start with you.
Excellent question. I think that's probably best reserved for, you know, the Seattle City Attorney. But as a city council member, I will support efforts and I will support the city attorney in seeking justice from these mega pharmaceutical companies and making sure that Seattle gets its fair share. Too many people are dying of opioids, too many people. And we need some accountability with respect to resources. So I am committed to working again with the city attorney to make sure that Seattle gets its fair share and also the state attorney general. But these resources can help us grow and scale a lot of these programs and services that we both agree on, the care team, et cetera. But I'm not here to set that legal strategy, I'm just here to demand that we get our fair share.
Lauren?
Yeah, the federal government, you know, we took some of these big pharmaceutical companies to the mat, and they had to pay up some billions of dollars. That was a fraction of the damage that they've caused. So I think we need to, as a federal government, go after more money to fix this problem. The other thing we need to do is, at the city level, if we can't, you know, if we don't have the long arm of justice to reach out and take on these big companies, what we can do is support the treatment. It shouldn't be easier to get opioids than it is to get treatment. And right now, it's a whole lot easier to get fentanyl and any other opioid than it is to get treatment for, for a substance use disorder problem. So that's where we can invest as a city and make sure that we are taking care of our elders, our youth, it's, you know, it's fitting all of us, and make sure that we can actually help make that problem better.
Okay, and before I invite you to do your closing remarks, I'll do a kind of a rapid-fire question, so 30 seconds, let's say. And I'm going to paraphrase this a bit. So we talked about a lot of issues today, and a lot of that requires investment. So, you know, we, we mentioned diversion, the lack of resources for treatment, police funding, housing funding, support for early family support and intervention. If you had to do just one thing as a new city council member, where would you focus your time? Lauren, let's start with you.
Oh boy, we have some big problems. And we've kind of been doing everything a little bit wrong here. So last, I would focus on homelessness and public safety. It's a little bit of a Venn diagram there. We spent $37 million on suites last year. I would love to see that money put towards building tiny home villages to get, bring people inside so that our streets become our streets and our parks become our parks and we all feel safer, including the people who are on the streets. That was too fast, wow, okay.
Public safety, public safety, public safety. That's the number one issue as a dad of three young kids. That is a number one issue that drove me to run in this race. I'm the concerned dad from Del Ridge. Public safety, public safety, public safety. We're out of, the current situation is out of hand, and I'm here to do better. I'm here to provide a more thoughtful, balanced approach to public safety. Make them a safe, public safety, public safety, public safety.
What one thing? Not a statement, what one thing?
Wait, okay, so as a moderator, I will allow this. So maybe we'll do 30 seconds for both candidates. So specific to public safety, where would you put your investment dollars?
For me? Hiring more police. We're grossly understaffed and under-resourced today. Hiring more police.
They don't want to do it.
And, it's not either/or, and investing in our care team. Amy Smith's new care team, civilian-led responses. Police don't want to be, need to be responding to every single pricey situation, so investing in our care team. Those two things.
Lauren?
The care team is really important. I think it's our best way to rapidly increase, if we invest in it, if we support it, it's currently set up to fail, so we will need to see money in the budget. to make sure that we have people who can respond to these different types of calls. We already have a lot of money going into hiring and recruiting police. I don't think it's money. I think it's different tactics and different roles and really thinking outside the box about how we can improve public safety across the board.
Okay. Thank you for your questions. I'm going to allow the candidates to make their closing remarks before we get up. Rob started first, so Maran, I'll have you start first this time. And I will invite you, in your closing remarks, to also consider how you would make Seattle more age-friendly overall. And you've got two and a half minutes each.
There were so many issues we didn't touch on as far as ways to make Seattle more age-friendly. Making sure that we have many different types of housing options. Making sure that people feel that we have the support for all different types of people aging. I know that there's, you know, LGBTQ people often feel like they have to go back in the closet because they don't have the options of where people can enjoy their retirement. So, and then activities and organizations and getting people connected. You know, isolation is one of the biggest issues that we deal with. So there's so much more that we can do. But I will say in closing that District One deserves an experienced leader who has the proven ability to listen, build trust, and champion evidence, not ideology, and deliver results. Someone who has goals and, but also plans and a way to pay for them. Because goals without a plan are just words. That's what I've been doing for 25 years in, inside of big businesses and big corporations, managing big messy problems and bringing teams together to get more done. But ultimately, this campaign is about community. We see so often that when we come together, we can have so, we can make such a change for the better. And I love to see all of the ways that people are currently building community. It is so heartening, and I would love to increase that. I would love to be in every neighborhood with rolling office hours so that no matter what your work schedule is, you can find me face-to-face. I'm proud to have the endorsements of all six of our former opponents in the race. These are leaders in D1 who we spend a lot of time with. And I think that speaks to my ability to build bridges, not burn bridges. And that is going to be one of the most important things that we need in this next council, is people who can reach across the aisle, have civil discourse, and be able to work together to get things done. I'm also endorsed by our King County Democrats, the Stranger Martin Luther King Labor Council, dozens of labor unions, as I mentioned, the 911 Dispatch Guild, the Bus Drivers Union, Sierra Club, Urbanist, you know, many community leaders, and the six opponents. So I hope that I can earn your trust, and I would love to serve you in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
So start with the last call, the question, you know, how can we make Seattle more age-friendly? Well, let me start by telling you what I already have done in that area. Again, I'm the only one in this race who actually has any experience writing government policy and helping to pass law. Only one. And I've done that by serving on countless government commissions. One of the things that I'm proud of my work in doing is I'm the chief architect of a worker-protection ballot measure that was ultimately passed by voters that protects workers in the workplace against discrimination in employment as a result of their status as family caregivers or veterans. And as a dad of young kids and an Air Force veteran myself, my DNA and fingerprints are clearly all over that. But more people benefit than just me when you can show up at work and not feel discriminated against as a result of your family caregiving obligations. And one thing I learned in the course of that journey, yes, the traditional use cases, you know, parents with younger kids, but also increasing the amount of folks, particularly in immigrant refugee communities, have elder care responsibilities. So I've already been doing this work, folks, and will continue to look for ways to do it at Seattle City Hall collectively. But Seattle is at a crossroads. We can elect more of the same, or we can elect a better or collaborative approach to all the issues, especially public safety. Everyone deserves to feel safe in their own neighborhoods and their own communities, free of threat of crime or unequal justice by those sworn to protect them and serve. I'm here to provide a more thoughtful, balanced approach to all the issues, one that's rooted in principle, values. Because who the heck knows what's going to appear before the Seattle City Council tomorrow? We need to be more thoughtful and principled. And I've been consistent about all of those this entire campaign. But on public safety, I recognize the importance of policing enforcement and police reform and alternative civilian-led responses or alternatives. Our city doesn't need another unreliable, unpredictable council member with a megaphone? Activists? The city deserves better. You all deserve better. And I clearly didn't win the former candidate high school popularity contest. I'm not running for that. I'm running to focus on public safety, homelessness, and affordability in our city. And I would love, love, love to earn your support. Thank you.
Well, thank you to both candidates for doing a hard thing to show up and try to represent your community. So let's give them a big round of applause. And thank you to all of you for being so brave and strong. So I invite you to stick around, ask the candidates questions, and also be sure to use your democracy vouchers. So we've got staff here who can accept them today, agreed, as well as replacement vouchers if you need it. So with that, I release you, get some food, coffee, and continue the conversation. Thank you.